All right, thank you Brian, and welcome everyone to the September 27, 2021, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight with a proclamation that the mayor's going to do for us for Down Syndrome of Alabama. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you guys. And I will, I will actually face this way. Do you guys all want to come up in front? Because you can. You guys want to come on up?
We need to apologize sir, we have an issue with the door, but my staff did set it not to open, not to close till 7:30, but we had a computer malfunction.
We had a computer issue, so.
So I apologize.
We apologize for everybody that was locked out.
Profusely.
Yes.
Computers are not supposed to make mistakes, according to my son.
So this is a proclamation for Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Whereas October is recognized as Down Syndrome Awareness Month to raise public awareness about the condition and advocate for acceptance and inclusion for people born with Down Syndrome. And whereas Down Syndrome is a condition in which a person is born with an extra chromosome. A baby is typically born with 46 chromosomes, but a baby with Down Syndrome has an extra copy or part of a copy of one of those chromosomes, chromosome number 21. And whereas Down Syndrome is one of the most common types of intellectual disabilities with 400,000 Americans living with Down Syndrome and approximately 6,000 babies born annually with Down Syndrome. Whereas people with Down Syndrome still face stereotypes and myths, but they have shown time and time again that the condition is just one part of who they are and doesn't define or limit their abilities. Whereas it is important that during Down Syndrome Awareness Month, all citizens are urged to spread the message of love, acceptance, inclusion, and respect. Now therefore I, Patrick McCloskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, do hereby proclaim October 2021 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in the City of Homewood and encourage citizens to envision and strive for an Alabama where individuals with Down Syndrome are accepted and included for who they are. So.
Just kind of look at the general direction.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all our visitors. All right. So with that, we will call this meeting to order, and we will start with an invocation by our own Dr. Jones, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand.
If you'll pray with me. Dear Lord, thank you for all of our many blessings. Thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for these young people that are here for Down Syndrome of Alabama and how special they are in God's eyes. May we always provide respect for them and love and encouragement through the city. And thank you for the budget that is coming up tonight and all of the people, residents, that are going to be encouraged by it, by what we spend and what we bring to the City of Homewood. Thank you for all these people up here that have spent a lot of time working for the residents that we care about very much. We ask all this in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Mr. President? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Welcome. Ms. Salter, if you will, please call a roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtin?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon?
Here.
Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andres? Is she absent?
She is.
Okay. Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Okay, you got one absent, but you got 10 with Zoom included.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is the reading of the minutes from the regular council meeting of September 13, 2021. I would entertain a motion and a second to dispense with the reading of those minutes and for approval of the same.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Gualtin, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 10 to 0. All right, next we have board vacancies, and I believe Ms. Smith has one for the Historic Commission?
Yes, we need to open the Ward 1 spot on the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission. Wes Stevenson has had to step down, so I'd like to open that up until, is it October 11th? Is that our first?
October 11th is our first, the 25th is the second. Depending on which one you wanted to.
You know what, I'm going to just go ahead and say the 25th because it might take a little time, so yeah. But if Andy and Melanie, if y'all could kind of put the word out to y'all's folks that we're looking for a new Ward 1. And I know Wes is the only, currently Wes is the only attorney on the board. It's not required that the person be an attorney, but I know that they like to have a lawyer, so if y'all can think of anybody, that would be great. So with that.
All right, so then we will leave that open until October 25th at 4:30. Okay? Next, we have additions to the agenda. We have two additions tonight. The first is 210921, request to amend the 21, 21, 2022 budget for funding for One Roof, which is a charitable organization, in the amount of $5,000 brought to us by Counselor Wolverton. That will be on the committee referral agenda to finance. And then secondly, we have an item that is currently on the committee referral agenda that was discussed at the budget meeting immediately prior to this meeting, and since the Finance Committee has already dealt with that, we will move that to other new business. That is item 140921, request to authorize the mayor to execute a contract to purchase two properties currently being leased from the estate of Buddy Wade, brought to us by the mayor, and Robert Burgett, our finance director. So with those two amendments, I would seek a motion and a second for approval of the amended agenda. So. Motion by Ms. Nelms, second by Mr. Harden. Mr. Harden, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
President, was that one roof?
One, one roof.
One roof, okay, sorry, one roof, okay, got you.
All right. There are no items on the consent agenda tonight, so we will go straight to the old business agenda. The first item is 010921, request for consideration to surplus the following vehicle, the 2004 International 7404 by 2, with VIN number, the last four is 3501, brought to us by Berkeley Squires, our Public Works Director. And we will start with a report for finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met on September 20th, and we're recommending 5 to 0 approval of this item as an ordinance.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Kendrick, can we have a first reading?
Yes, sir, it's an ordinance to declare a certain property as surplus. Section 1, Seabird, establishing and declaring that the following described, personal property of the city is no longer needed for public or municipal purposes, is therefore declared surplus. 2004 International 7404 by 2, VIN number is identified by Mr. Wyatt. Section 2, the mayor and the city clerk has authorized the disposal of the property by auction to the highest bidder.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion for unanimous consent.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Harden, and Ms. Salter, if you'll do a roll call for us, please.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes. All right, so that is 10 to 0. I would now entertain a motion and a second for approval.
So moved. Second, whatever.
Motion by Mr. Gualtin, second by Ms. Smith, and another roll call vote, please, Ms. Salter.
Counselor Gualtin?
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Gier?
Yes.
Counselor Alamon?
Yes.
Counselor Wolverton?
Yes.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Nelms?
Yes.
Counselor Harden?
Yes.
And President Wyatt?
Yes, so that is also a 10 to 0 vote, and that will be ordinance 2816. All right, next item, 020921, request to consider paying bonuses to employees if the city completes the fiscal year September 30, 21, with a budget surplus brought to us by Robert Burgett, our finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. And another report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the Finance Committee met and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval for this item. So 5 to 0 out of finance, and I'll be happy to go over the tiers. I have them here somewhere.
Okay? If anyone has questions on that. Any questions? Anybody got any questions? Everyone remember the tiers. Okay. We have a motion from finance, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that is 10 to 0, and will be resolution 21121. All right, next item, 040921, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a variance to the tree ordinance to cut seven protected trees at 157 Lucerne Boulevard. And we will start with a report from special issues, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met last week, and we voted 5 to 0 to refer this item back out to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing tonight. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Ms. Andres, and we heard from the homeowner, Mr. Westerlund, about his trees, and then also he's going to be replacing trees, so, and I can let them give you those details.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, we will open the public hearing on this matter, and we will start with the homeowner and/or Mr. Cook, whoever wants to talk first.
Well, I'll start. Yes, under the current ordinance, you cut more than four protected trees, you have to get council's approval. The homeowner has met with our city arborist to work out replanning of more trees to replace some of those to get his MTD up to where he needs on the lot. He has some, I think the last time he's, for the committee, he sent out some diagrams of what he's going to plant and where, so.
It's on the owner's room.
Okay, yeah, all right. So I'll turn it over to the homeowner. Any questions?
Anybody else here to speak for or against this item? Yeah? Yeah, Matt, you got the one? Come on up.
I have a sign-in sheet right there.
If you will just sign in.
Yeah.
Hey, Counsel, how are y'all doing tonight? I hope y'all are well. Let me sign in here right quick. So I think most of y'all know who I am, Matt Rich, Chair, Home and Environmental Commission. I was actually coming tonight to not speak against, obviously, I come tonight to commend the homeowner for doing exactly what we expect Homewood residents to do. Too many times we see things cut down, and then we come before council, and we say, oops, my bad, I will pay for this. So I'm coming tonight, I know he has spoken with Bram, the city arborist, and has done his due diligence, so I'm really speaking in tonight to say as a public outcry to others, this is the way it should happen. And I'm so happy to see someone come in like this and do it the right way. So that's really the public hearing that I'm giving tonight, President Wyatt. Thank y'all for letting me come in and be able to do that. It's nothing for or against, it's just a, you know, public action to say, please have others do this as well. Thanks, Counsel, appreciate it. Thank you very much. All right, anybody else here to speak to this item? Not then I'll close the public hearing and ask for questions or comments from counsel.
I just echo Matt's comments. We do appreciate the fact that you were very proactive in your project. You went to the arborist, you had him come look at the trees, you explained your position, and then took suggestions about what to go back in, how many to go back in, so we appreciate you doing that. But he's exactly right, that's the way it's supposed to work, so we appreciate that.
I didn't want to upset anybody.
And if no one else has other comments, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Ms. Smith, and a second by Mr. Alamon, and Ms. Salter, just for the record, Ms. Andres has arrived, so she is now with us.
I got her in my closet, you're sorry. She could slip in about me, no, sir. Thank you, sir, they're forgiving me honest.
No problem. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that passes now 11 to 0, and will be resolution 21122.
Somebody will tell Bray's Tree Service, that's the one using.
Thank you. All right. Next item, 170821, request to consider the mayor's fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget for all funds brought to us by Robert Burgett, finance director, and Melody Salter, our city clerk. So we, just as a reminder to everyone, so we go through these funds one at a time, and then we have a couple of extras at the end, items that are included in the general fund budget, but that we also have to have a separate piece of paper for, so there's, one of those is for the 1% COLA, and one is to create the new positions that personnel board, if we have a separate piece of paper for each of those. So those are already included in the general fund, but there will be two extra votes because of that. So with that, we will start with the general fund and a report from finance. Mr. Jones, if you'd come for me.
Okay, okay. Before I make the first recommendation, Mr. President, I do want to provide, as I do annually, some highlights of the budget discussion. We had many hours of discussions, as we all recall, and I think we were very efficient this year, really thanks to department heads and the mayor kind of coordinating the effort, being tight with that, Mr. Burgett, Ms. Salter, all of the work that went into it. And it's a testament that we have very few changes from what the mayor had recommended, and I think that says a lot about how well we've worked together with the mayor's office and how we support each other and communicate. And I think that has been a really positive element of this. So thank you, Mayor, for kind of coordinating that. I will highlight a few things, just so you're aware of some things that are in the budget. We are, as you mentioned at the end, we're going to talk about a 1% COLA that has been approved, and you know, we are really not part of this, the resolutions tonight, but what we passed a few minutes ago is the bonus contingent upon having a surplus. So if you have 20 years of service, you're getting a $2,000 bonus. So we thank our employees for all of their hard work. We are funding merit increases throughout our personnel, that's at a cost of $377,000. We did our best to estimate what the health insurance increase was going to be. We thought 5% would do it, but unfortunately, you know, we got word last week that it's 5.9%, so the Finance Committee got together and said, okay, we're going to pass that on to the employee, and we said, no, we're going to pay, we're going to pay for that. So the 5.9% increase is being absorbed by the city, that cost is $174,823. Also, I want to mention, we did pass a year ago, the Tier 2 RSA conversion. This is an ongoing cost that will be handled by the City of Homewood. That currently, the first year cost is $163,171, and that's increasing the city's RSA contribution factor to 16.3. So we did pass that, and again, that's not a one-time cost, that's ongoing cost that we have within the city. We also are doing, we also passed, under the ARPA funding, we passed a one-time payment for department heads and eligible full-time employees of $2,500 for full-time, and then also $250 for part-time with certain conditions of employment. So we're excited about that. Also, the mayor had recommended a lot of, a lot of projects that we're looking at, and we're excited to support those and maintain those in the budget. So under the bond refunding proceeds, we got the Lake Shore Diamond Interchange, and so that's 2.4 million. Then we, the Greensprings Highway Revitalization, completing that, 2.5 million. Greenway 2, I guess, 1.2 million. And then also, we looked at, you know, it's important that we take care of our infrastructure and other needs that are not that exciting, but we have to do it. So under the ARPA funds, we've got Griffin Creek, it was taken care of, 270,000 creek wall repairs, 151,000 stormwater repairs, $980,000. And then also, we have to deal with the chiller in here, as we know, it's typically about 30 degrees in here. So we really need to, but that's going to reap a lot of rewards in terms of savings moving forward. Also, we did feel that it was important, an essential service that the city provides is paving, so we already had paving, the mayor, you know, obviously sees paving as important, but we decided, let's reinforce that, we added 605,000 for repaving. Also, Mr. Squires had approached the committee talking about the challenge that he's having in getting people to work and the labor shortage that we have there, so we moved to a 5-point scale for that, for his department, and that is just shy of 299,832. Also, the mayor recommended, and I love my 20-year plan for the fire engine, so we are funding 650,000 for a new fire engine, and then also other city vehicles, 641,000 for new city vehicles. And then we also approved in the budget sidewalk funding of 335,000. So to say we did a lot, I mean, I think it was, I think it was a great year for the budget, so I want to thank Mr. Gualtin, Mr. Alamon, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Harden, and everyone else who attended our meetings. I think everybody contributed, and then department heads were very, very good about being here and talking with us about the budget. They're obviously passionate about each of their departments, and they obviously would like to have more, and we did the most that we could. We felt like we have 591 employees, and so we all have to think about that when we're formulating this budget. So thank you for bearing with me as we work through this, and I know you think I say no to everything, but I really try to have an open mind. So with all of that, thank you for indulging me. All of our, all of our items were basically 5 to 0. I can provide that for you on each one, but it's 5 to 0 recommendation to council.
That is wonderful, so we can just go through each one without having to get the individual recommendation, so.
That's correct.
That's wonderful, and thank you for the overview. It was, that was both thorough and concise, considering the amount of work that everybody put in, and not the least of which is you, Mr. Jones, so we appreciate everything that everyone's done in putting this together.
And I want to just make a statement, I've said in the past, that I don't know where we'd be without Dr. Jones and the work he does. Before we even meet, he spent a ton of time meeting with the mayor, meeting with Ms. Salter and Mr. Burgett, trying to put all this together, and he makes it easy for us on the committee, so thank you, Dr. Jones.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
All right, well, let's see if we can get this the last mile then. Okay, we'll start with Fund 01, the general fund. We have a report from finance, I mean, we have a motion from finance. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be 21123. Next is Fund 02, Grants Fund. Any questions or comments? Not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0 also, and will be 21124. Next is Fund 04, the 7-cent gas tax fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21125. Next, we have Fund 05, the 4- and 5-cent gas tax fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21126. Next, we have Fund 06, the Board of Education Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be 21127. Next is Fund 11, the Debt Service Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21128. Next, we have Fund 12, Capital Fund, Capital Projects Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21129. Next is Fund 13, the Environmental Escrow. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be 21130. Next is Fund 14, the Insurance Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be 21131. Next, we have Fund 15, the E911 Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21132. Next is Fund 21, Corrections Fund slash Jail Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21133. Next, we have Fund 22, Corrections, the Corrections.
That's Correction Fund Court.
That's the Court Fund, sorry, as opposed to the Jail Fund.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be 21134. Next, we have Fund 24, the Municipal Court Special Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That'll be 21135. Next is Fund 25, the Inspection Technology Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0, and will be 21136. And we have Fund 26, the GOW Construction Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and it's 21137. And we have Fund 28, Judicial Administration Fund. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0, and will be 21138. Next, we have the increase for a 1% COLA that's part of the general fund, but we need a separate resolution for that. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21139. And lastly, we have new positions for fiscal year 2021, 2022, a zoning inspector and a traffic maintenance superintendent. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be 21140. And with that, the budget is passed. Thank you again, everybody.
I'm sorry, President Wyatt, I did accept the resolution. Can we make 140 zoning inspector?
Oh, oh, sorry. We're not done, never mind.
It's not wrong.
That's okay. So we'll make, so 121140, let's just re-vote to make sure we're on the same page. That's just for the zoning inspector, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's 11 to 0, and will be 21140 for the zoning inspector, and then we have the new position of a traffic maintenance superintendent. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is also 11 to 0, and will be 21141. And with that, we're done with the budget. No problem, we just get to celebrate it twice.
Well, you know, it's, I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
All right. All right, next item, 090921, request to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for resurvey of the Rosedale National Register Historic District, brought to us by Eddie Griffith, Chairman of the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission, and Melody Salter, our city clerk, and a report from finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and voted five to zero to approve.
All right, so we have a motion from finance, any questions or comments?
And I will say, Eddie was here, he had to leave, I think. He told me he had to scoot out before 7:00. And so, this is, he's, they're hiring a consultant and using grant money from the state that is passing through the federal government to redo the survey that was initially done in 92...
2007, I think.
Yeah, I can't remember, yeah, that's right, of the historic, the National Historic District for the Rosedale community. So, the consultant will come in and resurvey to kind of see what's still there from the original survey, what's changed, and get that updated so that it'll be more current than it is now. Oh, there's Eddie right there. Eddie, I just gave him your spiel, and I probably gave it wrong, so if you want to weigh in with anything, please feel free to come on up.
It's all right.
No, that's okay.
You leave.
I knew you said you were leaving, so I thought you had, I thought you had scooted out.
So, we publicly advertised the request for qualifications, we called everybody we knew in North Alabama within two hours, and Caroline Swope at Kings Tree Studios is the only person that actually had a timely response. We got one more that was later, so we negotiated the fee down to what we have in the grant and our small city contribution. But she is well-qualified, she meets National Park Service standards as an architectural historian, and she has done these type surveys all over Alabama and stuff.
And she's the one we saw the resume on that.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so I think she'll do a great job. We plan to have a public meeting in November to kick this off, but history is slow, and so it will take till the end of August to complete her report. She needs the winter months when the trees are off to get adequate photography, so when we get through, we'll have photographic documentation of all the structures in Rosedale, and those will be tied to the GIS system as well, so that's it.
Eddie, do you mind telling a little more about then what that will be used to do?
Yeah, what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay, the main purpose of this is, it's been, when we complete this, it'll have been 18 years since we got the National Park Service certification of the Rosedale Historic District, and as you know, a lot has gone on in the neighborhood since then. So, this will give us a new baseline of what remains, what historic resources we have, and it'll also look at properties that were non-conforming 18 years ago to see if they conform now, which essentially just means, are they 50 years old and do they retain their historic character? And then, again, when we get through, we will have all this tied to the city GIS system. And it is about public awareness, too, so by having these public meetings that are required at the start and at the end, we do hope that the community, Rosedale and the city of Homewood, will come out and just hear what historic resources we have, so.
And I would just like to thank Eddie and all the members of the Historic Preservation Commission who have really championed this and made sure that it happens. So, thank you for your work on it, Eddie. I know you have, you've put a lot of time in, and we appreciate it very much.
Well, once we get through, we'll know how, we'll all know how this operates, and we'll be looking for the next grant opportunity.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Eddie.
Thank you.
And real quick, Eddie, you said that meeting is in November for, to overread the process for the consultant? If you would, please just send that to all of us, too, so we can help spread the word on that, because we'd love to make sure all of our residents who are interested know about that. And again, thanks for everything you do.
Right, yeah, we're planning it now, we'll make sure everybody knows about it. Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have a motion from finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be 21142. All right, that brings us to the committee referral agenda, or the amended committee referral agenda. I would seek a motion as second for approval of the amended committee referral agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Is that Mr. Wolverton?
No.
Motion by Mr. Wolverton.
Yes.
Second by Ms. Andrews.
I don't know. I was just vouching for Andrew, Andy was second.
Second by Mr. Gualtney. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. That brings us to other new business. The first item is 100921, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a vacation, of a vacation of a portion of unnamed alley between 1722 28th Avenue South and 1715 27th Court South, brought to us by Mike Moran and Wyatt Pugh of our inspections and Permits Department. We will set this public hearing for November 8th at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 110921, request to set a public hearing for consideration of vacation of a portion of 27th Terrace South, also brought to us by Mike Moran and Wyatt Pugh of our inspections and permits department. That public hearing will also be set for November 8th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 120921, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a variance to permit a front yard masonry wall at 311 East Glenwood Drive, brought to us by Aaron McGarrett and Wyatt Pugh. That public hearing will be set for October 11th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 150921, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a variance to permit internal illumination of a wall sign in downtown sign District Number One at 2821 Crescent Avenue, interior elements brought to us by Candace Watson and Wyatt Pugh. That public hearing will be set for October 11th, October 11th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 160921, request to set a public hearing for consideration of two front yard, two front yard fence variances at 214 Edgewood Boulevard, brought to us by the Mobley's and Wyatt Pugh. That will also be set for October 11th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. Next item, 170921, request to set a public hearing for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 320 Kennelworth Drive, brought to us by Houston and Aaron Shirley and Wyatt Pugh. That one will also be set for October 11th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. All right, which brings us to 190921, request to approve liquor license ABC 020 Restaurant Retail Liquor due to ownership change at Shiki Thai and Sushi LLC located at 300 Holman Hill East Suite 109, brought to us by Wine and Narisoma. Mr. Gualtney, do we have approvals of this yet?
We do, let's see, this one, Serrell, nope, I take that back. We were going to, for Shiki, we were going to take this one and pass it pending conditional approval by Fire and Police with their sign-off.
All right.
We have two others that are approved, but not this one.
Okay, so I take that, that's a motion for Mr. Gualtney?
Yes.
And a second for Mr. Alamon. And again, this is approval conditional upon receiving word from Fire and Police. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. All right, 200921, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of August 24th through September 13th, brought to us by Robert Burgett, our Finance Director and Melody Salter, our city clerk. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the vouchers were handled by Mr. Gualtney, and I will say, Mr. Alamon, I'm going to take it over for the next quarter, because it is a very tricky quarter, we don't want to throw you in to the...
I appreciate your time.
You're not going to argue?
I thought you would vehemently object, vehemently object, but no, and we can kind of work together a couple of meetings so that you're comfortable, but this is not a good time for you to be taking them over at the beginning of the fiscal year, because we're going to have a lot, a lot of carryover, so we'll give it back to you in the first quarter of the calendar year, if that's okay. So, Mr. Gualtney, I'll yield to you.
Yes, I'm terribly disappointed to be yielding responsibility, yeah. It's been a challenge just to get it done. Now, I looked through the vouchers today and did not see anything that looked out of the ordinary, so I would make a motion for approval and handing it off to Counselor Jones.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Gualtney, a second by Ms. Smith. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and is 21143.
Yes, sir.
You see what I did there, too? I made sure that I made a motion.
That was included in the motion, right?
No take backs.
And Dr. Alamon, Melanie Jennings hails our county, I will send back there, she kind of had a little birdie list for me, I had to make sure she looked out for you, because that's a reference to our list. You have to work too, because you're the ones on, that's a shout-out to Melanie.
All right, so our last item is 140921, request to authorize the mayor to execute a contract to purchase two properties currently being leased from the estate of Buddy Wade, brought to us by the mayor. This is an item that was handled at the budget hearing earlier today, and the finance committee considered it, and I guess I'll let, Mr. Jones, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, yeah, we had the recommendation from the mayor, so we moved to add that as part of the new budget. So, this is really a procedural matter to have the mayor execute contracts, so I would move that here from the floor to authorize the mayor to execute the contract for the two properties from the estate of Buddy Wade.
It is not a new contract. It's to authorize the mayor to purchase...
To purchase, based on the old contract.
You told us that before, sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt.
But, Mr. Kendrick, they're going to have to create a new document. I'm being...
No, there is a document, Mr. Harden, that spells out the terms and conditions.
All we're doing is fulfilling the terms of the existing document.
Yeah. Under our lease, we have to match the terms and conditions of the offer, which is attached to the resolution, forward to you on Monday.
All right, so we have a motion from Mr. Jones, do we have a second? A second from Ms. Smith. Mr. Mayor, would you like to speak to this?
Yes, discussion, just really quick, I just want to put this on your radar that once this is through, we will likely have to name the lots, the Buddy Wade lots, so there will probably have to be some signage that will go along with it.
That is...
We can, yeah, yeah, we can, we can handle that, I'm sure, in-house, but I just wanted everybody to understand that that will be...
Are we going to put in parentheses Sam's Lot?
Yeah.
Beer drinking, beer, high school beer-drinking lot?
Strike that from the record.
How do you know what she says?
Yeah, good, perfect.
I just said handle in-house, that's the last part.
There you go, that was the last thing I heard.
Did not say that for Johnny ever. Did you get Jones and Smith's option?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be Resolution 21144. And with that, we are done with the agenda for tonight. Mr. Mayor, you got any comments?
For those of you who are new to the council, I can vividly remember the first time that I had to go through budget and go through all the meetings and try and understand how this city is actually run with its finances, and it's a, it's a difficult thing to go through, but I appreciate you guys all taking the time, and I believe this was one of the most well-attended budget hearings as far as non-finance committee members go that I've seen in a long time. So, I really do appreciate you guys showing up at each one of the meetings to go through it, because there was a lot of discussion. We put a lot of work, a lot of effort into it, my department heads, I can't thank them enough for starting to meet with me in July of this year to be able to get something ready to present to you guys in, in the beginning of budget time, so I really do appreciate you guys going through it, and thank you for passing that tonight. I know that was a, that's a big deal. And of course, to my ex-wardmate, Dr. Jones, who I have heard him many a times sitting right next to him where Mr. Wyatt's sitting now, go through budget, line item by line item by line item, and he just, he does a great job, so please understand how valuable you are to this city and to this council. And lastly, I just want to say that the Grateful Dads event yesterday over in West Homewood at Pizzeria GM was an excellent event. It was widely attended, had a great time, raised some money for the Homewood City Schools Foundation. I don't know which school won, does anybody have any idea?
Hall Camp.
Was it Hall Camp, buy a long shot? Okay.
As if there was...
Yeah, yeah, well, it's right over there, I'm not really sure, yeah, that's right. So, we may have to have, you know, home and home games as we continue to go through this, so, but it was a great time, and I really appreciate everybody over there welcoming us to that area, so that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Gualtney?
I actually don't have any comments this evening, and I don't have to set public safety.
Awesome. Ms. Gier?
I don't have any announcements tonight, thank you.
All right, Mr. Alamon?
Yes, that's my first year going through the budget on the finance committee, and I want to commend Counselor Jones for all his incredible work and guidance, shepherding us, I'll call you my shirt button now, just shepherding us through this process. It's an amazing amount of work, and just grateful for his leadership and making sure that we understand what we're talking about. I also want to thank, of course, the mayor, Ms. Salter, Mr. Burgett, for all the work that they do to put together budgets, incredible amount of work, and I am in awe of their ability to do so. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wolverton?
Nothing special, just a belated happy birthday to my daughter. I was not here at the last meeting, and her birthday was within the week before that, so, but other than that, Public Works, we determined we're holding off on that one item, so probably only need a couple minutes. Walter, you're at 5:00 for...
5:15, we're going to go ahead.
Okay, all right, let's set Public Works for 5:15, and we're going to go 10 minutes. That should be it.
All right. Mr. Sims?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. First of all, I would just like to thank Abby McKibben, who's Sanford intern working with the city this semester, for her work recently, including she helped me out with a feature on Sims Garden in the recent newsletter, and just so all y'all know, Sims Garden currently has their pumpkin and mom sale going on through the end of October, so please go by and check it out. It's a really great family event. They also have some tea time events coming up in partnership with Little London, so check out that collaboration. Also, currently, Ward Three has three open board positions, BZA, the Abatement Board, and the Arts Advisory Committee. Those close October 11th at 4:30, so please submit your interest to Melody Salter for those positions. This past Saturday, I had the pleasure of joining in the Friends of Shades Creek at a cleanup, and they had nothing but praise to say for the collaboration they had with our city, JJ and Berkeley and others who pitched in and helped them have a successful cleanup event, and they also did some stream bank restoration projects, so thanks to the Friends of Shades and the city Public Works and others for collaboration with that. And also, would like to extend an early happy birthday week to Counselor Alamon. We're all helping you celebrate this week, hope you have a good one.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yes, finance at 5:00, we just have a short meeting. And I want to thank Mr. Sims. I think what's unique about Homewood, we're so unique in the way that the council is structured, having two representatives, and I think we all bring different strengths, and I want to thank Mr. Sims for the newsletter. I think that's great, I wish I could devote more time, but I really appreciate the work that you do on that, and that, I think that means a lot, and so I've been a little tied up with the budget, but thank you for that.
Thank you, more than a little tied up with the budget, thank you. I'm just trying to deal a little bit with my part. Was that an understatement?
Yes, but, no, and then, and thank you, Mr. Burgett, for all your hard work on the budget, and Ms. Salter and the mayor, as I mentioned, and then you, too, Mr. President, I mean, you kind of get everything facilitated, you support, and you kind of bridge the gap between the council and the mayor, and I think that, that has been very, very successful. So, thank you for everyone's hard work, so.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Well, while everybody else is having short meetings. Meanwhile, in special issues, we have seven, seven new items and the memorial policy. So, um, I guess I will set special issues for five twenty-five, right? No, five.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, five twenty-five.
And I, I don't know, did you want everybody to come to the next one? Some of those public hearings have to wait till November because they got to be published in the papers.
Right, the vacations, I think, can wait, um, but the ones that are going to happen on October eleventh.
So you want me to, to get with Kale, or whatever, they just said that they.
All the fence and sign, all the fence and sign ordinances, um, probably need to come. Um, so, yeah, that's a good point, because we can delay the vacation ones. Um, but that still has, that's still five.
It helps a little bit, though.
Yeah, it does, a little bit. Um, and then, so I'll, I'll say thirty minutes, since I don't have to deal with those two, because, yeah, so five fifty-five, I guess. I might as well just go ahead and say six, let's just go ahead and say six.
Give yourself the extra five minutes cushion.
Yeah, so, so I'll be done at six.
I bet you use it.
I'm not setting P and D six.
Oh, you're not setting it, okay, well then, there you go.
But you can still be done at six.
Yeah, we'll see, we'll see, Andrew, I'm not making any promises. Yeah, please be done. And, and then I'll turn, I mean, just to chime in, I, I really, every time we go through this, and I've done this, um, I guess, seven times now? Yeah, um, I'm always mightily impressed by how well this goes. Because I don't think this happens as smoothly in other places and other cities. Um, we, first of all, we received such a clean budget from the mayor after having, after having all his meetings with the department heads and then with he and Walter working with Melody and Robert to get it even cleaner. And then, so by the time we see it, everything is so in order and so ready to go that it makes the process so much smoother than it could be, um, and that it is in a lot of other places. So I just appreciate everybody's hard work because it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, um, it's a lot of extra meetings. Um, and I'm just glad that it's done and we're finished and, um, thankful for everybody's hard work.
Thank you very much. Ms. Nelms?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Andrews?
Uh, I am not going to set P and D, first of all. Um, and second of all, um, I hate that I missed the Downson North proclamation. I absolutely hate that. Um, Jane Lamb is one of my very best friends and, um, the Chaplains are dear, 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 dear friends. And who is more amazing than Daniel Chaplin? I don't know anyone who is. He's currently running a half marathon in all fifty states. So he is, uh, quite a machine and I hate that I missed that. Um, I was meeting my son for an early dinner and, as only a mother can do, I said, oh my gosh, you've got strep throat or walking pneumonia or something because your breath is so bad. You know, the, the smell that they get when they have something. And he's had a cough and a lingering this and that. So I took him down the street to St. Vincent's and he's currently over there right now. So anyway, as only a mother can do. Um, I, let's see, the waterworks, uh, contractors were in my yard today fixing my sprinkler, which means they're working their way down their punch list, so they're so close. And I asked them today about the paving and they said, yes, they're getting ready to meet to talk about paving, so, so close, Ward Five. Um, Chairman Jones, I wonder, would it be possible to get that summary that you mentioned? That, that is such an excellent thorough summary and I would love to share that with the ward and, of course, attribute it to you. But if you wouldn't mind maybe sharing that with everyone? That'd be awesome. And then lastly, um, my favorite subject, the bridge. I know, um, you guys have heard me talk about this for so long, but last week was a really big, um, move forward in the life of our bridge project because, um, Commissioner Ammons let me actually tell people what we were doing. Because we've been working and working and working, but kind of, you know, not ready to go public with a lot of what we've been doing just because it, it's just working through AlDOT and everything and just kind of, um, you know, just making sure we were moving forward, you know, with purpose. And, um, and we finally had everything in place, you know, to where we could just say, here's what things, you know how, I, I'm very guilty of saying, this is going to happen by December of twenty eighteen, et cetera. And so he just didn't want to put us in a position where I say something that isn't going to happen for the next three years, which is what I did in twenty eighteen. So here we are in twenty twenty-one. So, uh, we were able to say last week, you know, here's what we've done and here's what the timeline looks like. So now I can share with everyone that the timeline looks like, what our cooperative has done. And just a reminder, our cooperative is Homewood, Mountain Brook, Jefferson County, and the City of Birmingham. Peter Wright is the other Ward Five representative, or the other Homewood representative, along with myself. And then Steve Ammons, Darrell Quinn, Valerie Abbott, Alice Womack, and Virginia Smith. So we approved hiring a construction company to, um, do, to produce construction documents for the design that the Rose and Transportation has created for our improved thoroughfare, which is going to include a left turn lane and it's going to include a traffic light. Coming off of Highway two eighty westbound, there will be a traffic light by the express toll change. And then there'll be a left turn lane coming back on to headed two eighty east. So, um, we, with that, we are looking for conceptuals to be done by February and, um, to go out to bid in August of twenty twenty-two. And then Commissioner Ammons is hoping that we will be in, under construction by December of, um, twenty twenty-two. So that's where we are on that. So that was a, a big week. So I just wanted to give everybody the update on that. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Harden?
I have a book here I was going to go through and it'd take me a couple of hours. Um, I do want to thank my wardmate, uh, Ms. Andrews, for all the work on that bridge. It has been a labor of love. And as little as we get paid, she's probably lost money on that project. Um, I also, also want to echo everybody else's comment on the, on the budget. I think one of the great things this year is that the mayor was very engaged. He had the meetings with the department heads. Everything just went so smoothly. I still think, um, Mr. Burgett and Ms. Salter are down to about twenty cents an hour on their job for all they do for it. So I want to thank them also for all the work, because it just makes it easier. I mean, we really, I've done this, I guess it's my second time, and it was much easier, smoother and quicker this year. And boy, there's nothing like when you're sitting there in early August and you start putting those dates on your calendar. Man, this is going to take us forever. And it was great. Thank you, everybody.
All right. So where's this bridge we're talking about? Just kidding. Uh, thank, thank you, Ms. Andrews, for all that you have done on that bridge. It's, the amount of work that's gone into that is endless, so, uh, we appreciate it. And then lastly, I'm just, I don't, I don't want to belabor the point, but I, I do think it's worth noting. Because I, I don't know how many people from the public actually recognize this. I mean, we spend, we as a council spend about a month with the budget. Uh, and that feels like a long time. But that's just the very end of the process. Uh, it starts months before that, uh, with, um, Melody and Robert getting stuff together and, and, uh, collecting stuff, the department heads putting stuff together for each of their departments, and then meeting with the mayor, uh, and, and going through that. So just one last time, Melody and Robert, thank y'all so much for what you do. Thank you for all the work and time and effort that you put into this, your heart and soul into it.
It's a labor of love.
It, it is a labor of love, but it, I, you know, what y'all do, uh, is so valuable for the city and so valuable for us in terms of making, uh, making it understandable and making it, uh, where we can move through in the time that's allotted to us. Uh, because it would be easy to get bogged down in it if it wasn't, uh, presented in a, in a clear manner. Um, and if all that work didn't go in on the front end. Um, secondly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would echo what Mr. Harden said. I, I think your engagement in this has been second to none and your, the time and effort that you put into it. I, I've been through a number of these, uh, and, and I haven't been through one that goes badly, but this one, I don't remember one going this smoothly. Uh, and I, I don't remember one that didn't, uh, where the budget came to us in such a prepared manner. Uh, where, um, all of the department heads have been involved, been engaged in it. You had met with them, you had gone through everything with them. The time, I, I know it's tremendous amount of time and effort on the front end and all I can say is thank you because it makes our job so much easier on the back end. Uh, and, and it, it doesn't go unnoticed and, and I just sincerely appreciate that, as I know we all do. And then lastly, one last time, I don't ever want to go through a budget without Walter Jones. Um, I, I just don't want to do it. And, um, because I've never done it and, and the idea of it just scares me to death. Uh, because it, for all I said about everything that happens on the front end in the months beforehand, which is absolutely true, there's still time to screw it up. And without Mr. Jones' leadership in going through the budget and getting us set up and having his meetings with the mayor and with Melody and Robert and, and going through everything to make sure that it is where it needs to be and, and then presenting it to us in the manner in which he does, is, it, it's just remarkable that we can go through that book in a month and all of the various line items in it and, and know where we are. And, and that is due in no small part to what you do, Mr. Jones. And so thank you again for that. So with that, uh, we will adjourn this meeting and we will see everybody in a couple of weeks.